The Board and now coming to order, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Trup, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Griffin, Alderman Triplet, Alderman Young, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, eighteen present.
Quarant being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to rise, stand, to please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We also, Alderman from the sixth, would you like to approach the House? Spend with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, I move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on the motion, second about Alderman from the fifteenth. Alderman from the sixth.
Good morning, Mr. President and members of the Board of Aldermen. It is a delight to be before you this morning, and I have the pleasure of recognizing an individual who is dedicated and committed to his cause in our city. It's a pleasure to recognize Mr. Jim Bruce for his work with both Neighborhood Enterprises and we're celebrating the fortieth anniversary of Neighborhood Enterprises and the twentieth anniversary of Sanctuary in the Ordinary which is located in the Sixth Ward. Over the past forty years, Mr. Bruce, his staff and board have sought to serve low-income residents of this city with affordable housing. And oftentimes when we take controversial stands and important stands, you tend to ruffle some feathers, and Jim Bruce here is no different. And I believe that it's okay to ruffle some feathers sometimes, and actually, in our city, I think we need to ruffle feathers a bit. Sometimes when you ruffle feathers, you get folks to think a little bit differently and you get a change of perspective, and so I appreciate that. Not too long ago, my office received a letter from Mr. Bruce inviting me for, to his celebratory event for both Neighborhood Enterprises and Sanctuary in the Ordinary. And when I saw all the events that they had lined up for tomorrow, January, I'm sorry, June the eleventh on Saturday, I looked at the letter and I thought, oh, this is nice, a lot of nice events that are happening. But as I kept reading the letter, I also saw that he was coming from, I thought, a place of peace and reconciliation. He acknowledged that despite being in business for some time, there were some controversial issues, and that there were some conflict. And I admired his ability to acknowledge that and also to open the invitation to those he had, who he had had conflict with in the past, to attend and to celebrate the fortieth anniversary of Neighborhood Enterprises and Sanctuary in the Ordinary. Jim, I just wanted to, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen and on behalf of the other sponsors of this resolution, which are President Reed, Alderman Samuel Moore, and Alderman Craig Schmidt, we wanted to present this resolution to you because we acknowledge your conviction and we also understand that it takes a lot of courage for you to stand up for what you believe in. When you think about courage, I kinda had to laugh a little bit this morning, when you think about courage, you think of a big hulking person, a big, strong person, but what's really important, when you've really recognized what courage is, is in your heart, and it doesn't really matter, you could be big or small. It's about what's in your heart and your conviction that guides you. And I think that that's important to realize, and it's something that we all have within us. So, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, we just want to thank you for having the courage to speak up and stand for what you believe in. Our country is a democracy, that's what makes us great. You have used your voice, stood up for conviction, and exercised your courage to continue the fight for over forty years with Sanctuary in the Ordinary and Neighborhood Enterprises, and today, we acknowledge that and salute you for that.
Thank you for the award and thank you for the occasion. I have a plaque on my wall, it's by Mark Twain, it says, "All you need in this life is ignorance and confidence, and then success is sure." I think about my own life in that regard, I'm sure that I needed to learn a lot and that I have learned a lot along the way. Just give me a moment. This may seem perfunctory, giving somebody an award like this, a routine, but I feel that it's not, and even Casey's words says that it's not. Some of you know me from picketing outside your homes, or when you had a bill before the Board of Aldermen. And it's, I think without exception, it's with respect, and I hope it's both ways, I know it is on my part. Recently, I led a book, Forgiveness, Not Always Easy But Always Possible, by Reverend Carl Bemke, who's a friend of mine, and I'm deeply moved by it. Not just in our personal relationships, but in our civil, in our community relationships, it's important to, to understand and to be forgiving when, when we have been stupid or simply wrong or not abrupt. I certainly offer that to you, and I have been that, and I ask it from you. I'm looking forward to working with you, you'll still hear from me on the eminent domain issue, that's not over yet in our city or our state. And I do have, you know, our ministry, which is providing modest-priced housing, modest-priced housing for people, mostly in the, in their private realm, the private enterprise arena, was deeply bothered or troubled or handicapped by the, our experience with eminent domain, but I'm not here to belabor that. That's a chapter that Casey referred to, and, and I feel that's behind us. We, I brought a couple books along by Carl Bemke, one I'm gonna leave at the desk of the Board of Aldermen, and one I'm gonna give to Mayor Slay, because I really do feel that, and I do want that in return, that this is a conciliatory, forgiving, fellowship-type of a relationship between Neighborhood Enterprises and Jim Bruce and, and the City of St. Louis. The people who I sent the individual letters to come to the celebration tomorrow were older persons who, with whom I'd worked closely, whom I'd had properties, managed properties in their wards, but I brought invitations for all of you, I'll leave it at the, at the desk, and you're all invited. The activities are from three to eight tomorrow afternoon, the starting devotion is at three thirty, the food is from four to seven, if you don't want to miss that, and the, most of the speeches or recognition will be between five thirty and six thirty. The address is on Lafayette, but it'll be on the invitation that'll be at the, at the desk. I think that's it, thank you very much.
I think Alderman from the eighth was probably first, and then we go on down line. Alderman from the eighth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the Board. I happen to know Jim forty years ago when I was thirteen years old, and in many cases, I mean, Jim and his wife, who deserves a lot of credit, were way ahead of their times in an area that, that he had lived on Lafayette, the, the buildings were going down faster and faster and faster and being boarded up. He was kind of a, a new age pioneer that the hippies and the, you know, before we had yuppies, the hippies, the Lafayette Square people, they came in and staked a claim. He worked hard in the neighborhood, maybe not always with Casey's predecessors, you know, consistent with what they thought the neighborhood should be, but he was one of the first people to say, look, this is our city, you know, let's preserve it, let's preserve intact what we have. And over the years, I know he probably, probably never fought with my dad, but over the years, he fought with some of my predecessors in the Eighth Ward, and, you know, didn't really fight with me, was always respectful, and I understood that, you know, he really has a mission, he believed in the mission, that low to moderate income and poor individuals need housing. And whether or not that fit into the, to the, what people's grander plans are, whether or not we should have poor people living in gentrified neighborhoods, is, is a different issue. But he believed, and people didn't like that always, and he had that belief in his heart, it was his conviction, but he was very easy to work with over the years, we would disagree and leave it at that. But really, on behalf of my family and the people in the Eighth Ward who you used to work with, you know, I extend my thanks for all of your efforts, and you've never received any rewards or accolades, and I'm sure it's, you know, it's dramatically different for you to be there instead of up in the gallery, sitting there thinking, these people are crazy, but Jim, thank you for everything that you've ever done.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I just rise to tell Jim, thank you so very much. I was a board member of Cito Sanctuary in the Ordinary, and the first word that he read, I thought he was a crazy guy as well, and I actually thought he was a real crazy white guy walking into that neighborhood, like him, him and a dog that didn't bite, in and out of the neighborhood, trying to make it better and for poor people in that community. Jim gave me an opportunity and a chance with my company to work on some of those projects, and we worked it until we got it right. Jim would criticize you, he could beat you up with words and make sure that you understood what he, what he wanted and what he had to have, and we got along well. And Jim, in the neighborhood, in the Fourth Ward, they're taking away all our monies, but you can still come over to the Fourth Ward and bring Neighborhood Enterprise to the Fourth Ward despite what they're trying to do, no eminent domain. My pleasure.
Alderman from the twentieth.
Mr. President, members of the Board, we've had some very interesting conversations over time, and I have pointed out here, although you may not have heard about it, I pointed out some of our movement forward, our changes in terms of where we're all headed. Right now, Mr. Bruce is working in a, in a group where they are doing their first homeowner occupied property, and it's right behind a Millennium project that addresses thirty-five twenty Oregon, and I think that'll be for sale shortly. So, we're all kind of growing and changing and working together, and we're gonna continue to have, I'm sure, some interesting conversations to try to, because it's hard work, and anytime you get into some of these areas, it's not easy, and so when everybody talks about how nice and pretty everything is, it's really messy. And so when you're doing something as progressive as Mr. Bruce is trying to do and we're all trying to do, it gets really messy, so we appreciate that. I know this is just the beginning for you because you're an upstart organization, only forty years in your past, so the next forty are gonna be probably just as messy, but you have all that wisdom and we're all growing together, so I appreciate that, and congratulations.
Thank you, Greg.
Any further comments, any further comments? Also wanna just tell Jim, thanks for being so committed. I don't know how many of you have had an opportunity to just sit down and have a real close, personal conversation with Jim, but when you do, you find out that he's coming from a, a position of a passion, is what he really, truly believes in. So, as a newly-elected Alderman some twelve, thirteen years ago, one day, my wife was looking outside, it was early in the morning, and it was a very cold morning, and she said, Louis, there's a whole bunch of people outside the front of the house with signs, and they seem angry. And I looked outside, it was Jim and a whole bunch of people, Jim had, he was picketing me, he was, he was protesting me, but like you said, but as a friend. So, even during that process, I went outside and sat with Jim, we had a talk about the issue and stuff, but it's from a point of what he truly believes in, he's been a friend of mine since day one, and you will remain a friend of mine, Jim, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that you do. Now, this, this resolution that we give, that we're giving you here today, is the highest honor that the Board has to give a person. What it will do is to forever seal your name in the permanent records of the city, so that when people come, a hundred, two hundred years from now, they'll be able to read the annals of the city and see that Jim Bruce passed his way and you gave something to this city, so we can't thank you enough for what you've done, Jim.
Thank you, Louis.
signify by a percent, aye? Opposed, motion carried, with that, we'll return with our regular order of business. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. It's my pleasure to have a special guest this morning. We have visitors from the Grace Hill Sediment House, as well as, we have AmeriCorps Trail Rangers here that maintain and take care of our riverfront trail, and we just want to welcome them, we gave them a tour this morning, I hope I did okay, hope we educated you, we got to see the mayor's office and all the way back and all the president's office, and I thank you for letting us do that, so, but welcome to the Board of Aldermen.
All right, welcome. Any further, Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I would like to have as my guest today Anthony Lancia with the Associated General Contractors.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? We also have with us a number of, of individuals from the Urban League Weatherization Team, and they do a tremendous job, Carla Elliott, Connie Taylor, and Keith Jones, could you please rise so that people can... Have an opportunity to try to catch up on them, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guest this morning, Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, you have anything for us, they've wrapped up.
Hello, hello. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we gather on this Friday, June the tenth, which is National Yo-Yo Day, Mr. Stephens has decided his duties of office in that particular area are taken away from our meeting today, so he will not be with us.
Alderman from, Alderman from the thirteenth, recognize on the... Alderman from the seventh, would you like to make the motion on approval of the minutes? Oh, he's a... Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the minutes from the May twentieth meeting.
Move about Alderman from the thirteenth, second about Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by a percent, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A and B of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
With dispensal line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars, with dispensal line items eight through ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill eighty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and on its recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute the Lambert Airport Cargo City Lease Agreement between the City and Southwest Airlines containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and on its recommended and approved by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Comptroller to enter into and execute a license agreement for the K-Lot Facility between the City and United States of America, Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration, containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill number ninety, sponsored by Alderman Griffin and on its recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell one or more series of the corporation's City Justice Center leasehold revenue refunding bonds, Series two thousand and eleven, in aggregate principal amount not to exceed seventy million dollars in order to refund or redeem all or portion of its City Justice Center leasehold revenue refunding bonds. Board Bill number ninety-one, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its authorizing and directing the mayor to submit all necessary actions, applications, and to enter into agreements with the State of Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services for the Child and Adult Care Food, I Am Moving, I Am Learning Program, and authorizing the mayor upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment to expend any funds received by said grants to fulfill the obligations of the grants and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number ninety-two, sponsored by Alderman Villa and on its recommended by the Port Authority Commission, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the City and ACL Transportation Services LLC for certain land and mooring privileges on the unimproved ward for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three five-year mutual options. Board Bill number ninety-three, sponsored by Alderman Young and on its recommended by the Port Authority, Commission of the City, authorizing and directing the mayor and the Comptroller to enter into a lease agreement between the City and the Fred Weber Incorporated for certain land and mooring privileges on the unimproved ward for a period of ten years commencing on the date of execution with three five-year mutual options. Board Bill ninety-four, sponsored by Alderman Triplet and on its authorizing the execution of amendment to the redevelopment agreement by and between the City and St. Louis Lease Housing Associates Three Limited Partnership, prescribing the form and details of said amendment, making certain findings with respect thereto, authorizing other related actions containing a severability clause, that's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill ninety, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill ninety-one, to the Transportation Committee, Board Bills eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety-two, and ninety-three, and to the Housing Committee, Board Bill ninety-four, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
Following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill sixty-eight, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Young, and on its adopted pursuant to Section one oh five point four eight three of the revised statute of Missouri reaffirming the positions, provisions of ordinance six two three nine one six 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 nine one six seven six one seven and six eight four oh nine, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing an emergency clause. Following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee, Board Bill fifty-five, sponsored by Alderman Griffin and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from F Neighborhood Commercial District to the D Multiple Family Dwelling District in City Block six three one for properties on thirteenth and Clinton Street, City Block six forty for property on Clinton Street, City Block six thirty-two for properties on Clinton Street also, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number fifty-six, sponsored by Alderman Flowers and on its recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from K Unrestricted District to J Industrial District for properties in City Block thirty-four...
Some more.
Thirty-four fifty-eight for properties on Clarence, East Clarence, Carey, Pope, and Prescott, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block thirty-four fifty-eight and thirty-four sixty-three and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eight committee substitute, this, the following bills were reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill eight committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Boyd and on its amending on the six five two three three, authorizing the designation of honorary street names within the city, the basis for recognition requirement, requiring payment for the cost and installation of honorary signs and limiting the number of board bills, authorizing the designation of honorary street names. Board Bill thirty-nine, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Moore and on its authorizing and directing the Street Commission to next, take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the forty-three hundred block of St. Ferdinand Avenue as Joseph Clark Senior Way. Board Bill number forty, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Moore and on its authorizing directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the three thousand to thirty-one hundred block of Whittier as Chuck Berry Way. Board Bill forty-one, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Moore and on its authorizing directing the Street Commissioner to make, take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the twenty-nine hundred block of Marcus Avenue as Reverend William G. Gillespie Way. Board Bill number forty-three, sponsored by Alderman French and on its establishing speed bumps in various locations in O'Fallon Park containing an emergency clause. Board Bill eighty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis and on its directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Brantner Place at the East curb line of Francis and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number sixty-six, sponsored by Alderman Honowitz and on its establishing stop site for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Loftborough at Trainer Court, causing it to be a three-way stop intersection containing an emergency clause, that's the extent of second readings.
Dispensable line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill number fourteen, sponsored by Alderman Triplet and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-six sixteen California containing a severability clause. Board Bill number fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Triplet and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-six nineteen South Compton containing a severability clause. Board Bill number sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for sixty-four oh eight Arthur containing a severability clause. Board Bill seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Vaccaro and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for seventy fifty-nine Mardele containing a severability clause. Board Bill number eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Griffin and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-three twenty through forty-eight Dodier containing a severability clause. Board Bill number nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan...
Some order.
For forty-one sixty-eight West Pine containing a severability clause. Board Bill number twenty-one, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three twelve Washington containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-two, committee substitute sponsored by Alderman Florida and on its amending on the six seven seven four three by modifying the terms of five-year real estate tax abatement for thirty-eight oh five Wyoming. Board Bill twenty-three, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-two eighteen through twenty Cherokee containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight oh one through oh three Missouri containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Moore and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty-three twenty-five Ashland containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-six, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-four thirty-four Humphrey containing a severability clause. Board Bill twenty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Conway and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment... study and a redevelopment plan for forty fifty-nine Councilman, containing a severability clause. Board Bill fifty-three, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-nine twenty-four through twenty-six Cherokee, containing a severability clause. Board Bill number fifty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and on its amending ordinance six-seven oh one five by modifying the terms of ten-year real estate tax abatement for twenty-six thirty-two January North Magnolia, Pearl, South Magnolia, January redevelopment area, that's the extent of perfection consent.
All in from thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar, the perfection consent.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move for our perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by all in from thirteenth, second about all in from twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, and on its approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-one eighteen Forest, containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize on the perfection of board bill number forty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt Bill forty-five.
It's moved by Alderman from the twenty-fourth, I'll entertain a second on that motion, second about Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion?
Um, this is a, this is a five-year tax abatement bill, it's the type of bill we'd normally see in the perfection consent calendar, it appears today on the perfection calendar, so I renew my motion that we perfect this bill.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we perfect board bill number forty-five, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin? Alderwoman Triplett? Alderwoman Young? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman? Alderman Valmer? Alderman Villa? Alderman Arnowitz? Alderman Wessels? Alderman, Alderwoman Howard? I didn't, I didn't hear you. Alderwoman Florida? Alderwoman Behringer? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Schmidt? Alderman, Alderman French? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone? Alderman Williamson? Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Cruzen? President Reed?
No.
Alderman Truup? I, I can't hear you.
He voted present, he voted present.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman, Alderman French? Four, I vote twenty-one. Oh, I'm sorry.
And Alderman from the fourth.
Alderman Schmidt?
And Alderman from the fourth also.
Alderman Cone?
No.
Alderman Truup, did you vote present? Alderman Moore? Three, I vote twenty-five no votes.
By vote, you fail to stand the motion, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize?
Uh, Mr. President, members of the board, um, I think Mr. Alderman Ogilvy is a pretty good guy, and having voted on the prevailing side, I'd like to move that we reconsider board bill forty-five.
Second.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Madam Clerk, please, also welcome to the board, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin? Alderwoman Triplett? Alderwoman Young? Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida?
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
No.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson? You say no? Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Cruzen? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderwoman Flowers?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Twenty-seven, I votes, one no vote.
By your vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the twenty-second. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, this, uh, I've Uh, I move for the perfection, board bill forty-five.
Second.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-fifth, second about Alderman from the, from the, move by Alderman from twenty-fourth, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth, any further discussion?
I
Will do you?
I realize this is a contentious bill. And it's, you see, you guys have all spent a lot of time thinking it over, but I think, um, I think all in all, uh, you know, no harm will come to the city of Saint Louis should we perfect this bill. So I renew my motion.
Been moved and seconded all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, Alderman from the twenty-fourth, welcome to the board, uh, nobody gets out of here unscathed, and nobody gets out of here with a perfect record, so congratulations on your first passage. Alderwoman from the fifth, you recognize?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to, um, suspend the ruse, um, for the purpose of moving the following board bills from the perfection calendar to the third reading consent calendar. We have board bill fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two committee substitute, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, fifty-three, fifty-nine, and forty-five.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fifth, second about Alderman from the twentieth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin? Alderwoman Triplett? Alderwoman Young? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman? Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida?
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter? Alderwoman Cruzen? President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Conway? Alderwoman Davis? Alderman French? Twenty-seven, I votes, no no vote.
By vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the fifth. Third reading consent count, Alderman from the eighteenth?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like board bill fifty-one, uh, put on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, board bill number fifty-one, place it on the informal calendar, third reading informal calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board bills fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two committee substitute, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, fifty-three, fifty-nine, forty-five, twenty, sixty-five, sixty-seven, and sixty-seven, that's it.
Alderman from the thirteenth? Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for our third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth, second about Alderman from the fifteenth, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Truup? Alderwoman Flowers? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderwoman Griffin? Alderwoman Triplett? Alderwoman Young? Alderman Conway? Alderman Ortman?
Aye.
Alderman Valmer?
Aye.
Alderman Villa?
Aye.
Alderman Arnowitz?
Aye.
Alderman Wessels?
Aye.
Alderwoman Howard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Florida?
Aye.
Alderwoman Behringer?
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey?
Aye.
Al, Alderman Kennedy?
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman French? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Vacaro?
Aye.
Alderman Ogilvy?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Williamson?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderwoman Cruzen?
Aye.
President Reed?
Aye.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Conway?
Aye.
Alderman French? Twenty-eight, I votes, no no vote.
By vote, you stand the motion, Alderman from the thirteenth. Dispense with line item eighteen, report of enrollment.
Board bills fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two committee substitute, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, fifty-three, fifty-nine, forty-five, twenty, sixty-five, and sixty-seven.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. With dispensal line items twenty-one and twenty-two, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Announcements, Monday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, nine AM in the Leisure Room. Wednesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting, nine AM in the Leisure Room. Thursday, Legislation Committee meeting, nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, ten AM in the Chambers, that's the extent of my announcements.
Alderman from the second.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, first of all, I'd like to wish my colleagues from the twenty-seventh and the sixth ward a happy birthday, they both turned a half a year older this week, as well as my secretary and some of our secretary, Tracy Billups, birthday is tomorrow, so happy birthday, and I'd like to thank all the people that came out to support it live on the rocks, it was a success, it was fun, we're looking forward to another time, we're gonna try to do it July the first, if it's not too hot, but I think everybody enjoyed themselves, so I just want to say thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from tenth?
Hello, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, this Sunday, the twelfth of June, will be the annual JC's Soapbox Derby, taking part on the hill on MacLund Avenue, starting up near Botanical Avenue, running down towards Daggett, it'll start time trials at eight in the morning, the winners of this will go on to the finals in Ohio, there'll also be a antique and modern car show and motorcycle show with There'll also be a antique and modern car show and motorcycle show with food, games, and beverages. Thank you.
Alderman from, Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow, Saturday, is the picnic for St. Gabriel, which is held at, on Nottingham and in Francis Park. Please come down and enjoy all the games and rides. And next week is Marine Week here in St. Louis, so I'm excited. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, would like to make an announcement that this weekend there will be an art sale benefiting Paul Ryder, who worked for the St. Louis American. He tragically passed away a number of weeks ago, and, um, he had a wonderful art collection, uh, with many local artists that many of us know and love as well, and, uh, it's taking place on June twelfth from three PM to six PM. And the proceeds from the sale are going to benefit his son, uh, who, you know, is now without a father and is now entering into, uh, university at St. Louis University. So I encourage everyone to go, you know, buy a piece of art. Uh, he had a very extensive collection, from what I understand. It took quite a few carloads to get it over to Matt Art Gallery, um, so it is taking place this weekend, uh, June twelfth from three PM to six PM, and, uh, you know, I think we should get out there. He was a really wonderful gentleman, and, uh, many people in the community loved him, and his son, you know, would also appreciate the support.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As, uh, an announcement for the twenty-seven ward residents, our last meeting for the, for the summer award meeting will be the eighteenth of this month at ten AM at Bishop Willie Ellis Center at five nine three nine Goodfellow. Just remind them because July and August we shut down. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from, from the twenty-fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, a little premature announcement. On July fourth, the Dogtown Historical Society will be, uh, dedicating a new monument at the intersection of Clayton and Tam, uh, to honor all of those killed in action in wars since World War One who, uh, came from the greater Dogtown neighborhood. Uh, so come out July fourth, uh, for that dedication ceremony, and I'd also like to, uh, thank the Board of Alderman for welcoming their new minority floor leader to the board today.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from thirteen you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the third ward due to necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth. Second by Alderman from, from the eleventh. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from thirteen, recognize on the motion adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten AM, June seventeenth.
Move by Alderman from thirteenth. Second by Alderman from twelfth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand adjourned.